Surface Pro charger doesn't charge anymore. Do you know where I can replace it, or is that a heat question?
Okay, and we are live.
Later.
Okay. Mayor, what lies?
All right. Uh, I call this meeting to order. At seven oh one P M. And roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace. Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper. Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum present and let's see here, who's going to be the lucky winner? Um, Scott, can you do the pledge of allegiance for us?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
The nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
All right. Uh, now moving on to proclamations, and we have quite a few proclamations for this month. Uh, first one we have is celebrating Women's History Month. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable fill them, fill them, pop, fill up, fill in from pop. You know the word I'm trying to say. Uh, cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishmentness. Again, in the abolishmentness movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty twenty one as Women's History Month. In the city of Maynor, Texas, and call upon all citizens to deserve March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Maynor to be affixed this seventeenth day of March twenty twenty one. Sign, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. Definitely, definitely. Uh, uh, a much deserved, now I want to say deserve, a much, uh, uh, needed proclamation to re-highlight the significance of women in their fight for equality in, uh, uh, the deserved right for their equality. Uh, next coming up is the, uh, is the Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, and this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas a National Colonial Cancer Awareness Month is an annual celebration observed in the United States during the month of March to increase awareness of collectorial cancer. And whereas collectorial cancer is a third leading cause of cancer deaths among men and women in the United States. And whereas symptoms include a change in bowel habits, rectal bleeding, persistent abdominal discomfort, weakness and fatigue, and unexplained weight loss. And whereas many people with the cancer experienced no symptoms in the early stages of the disease. And whereas overall, the lifetime risk of developing this cancer is about one in twenty-three for men and one in twenty-five for women. And whereas it is critical that all people of all ages know the signs and symptoms of the disease. And whereas the Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to offer education on the signs and symptoms of this cancer and the importance of early detection and screening. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty twenty one as National Colonial Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Maynor and encourage all citizens to talk to family and friends about getting screened and to join in on activities that will increase awareness and prevention of this cancer. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Maynor on the seventeenth day of March twenty twenty one. Sign, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. And you know, this proclamation goes hand in hand with the whole, uh, launch, relaunch of our health efforts led by Councilwoman Ann Weir. So, uh, next proclamation up is Youth Art Month. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Youth Art Month is an annual observance each March to emphasize the value of art education for all children and to encourage support for quality school art programs. And whereas art education develops students' creative potential and improves problem solving and critical thinking skills by reinforcing and bringing to life what students learn in other subjects. And whereas art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities, and also gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. And whereas art education advances student mystery in art production, mastery in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim in the month of March twenty twenty one, Youth Art Month in the city of Maynor and call upon all citizens to give their full support to quality school arts programs for our youth. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Maynor, Texas, to be affixed this seventeenth day of March twenty twenty one. Sign, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. And you know, we just got done what last meeting, uh, uh, creating the Education Committee, which has already met with the school district and, uh, uh, sooner or later, it'll probably be talking with the new Compass Rose that'll be coming in. So, uh, it's good to see that we are acknowledging and supporting that effort uh, as a council and a city hall with this proclamation. And the next proclamation, uh, is for the National Medal of Honor Day. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Medal of Honor Day on March twenty-fifth, we honor the valor that the most courageous servicemen and servicewomen in the United States military have displayed. And whereas the Medal of Honor is the highest award for valor in combat across all branches of the United States military. And whereas awarded by the President of the United States, only military members who have gone above and beyond the call of duty will receive this distinction. And whereas there are three versions of the Medal of Honor. One for the Army, one for the Navy, and one for the Air Force, with personnel of the Marine Corps and the Coast Guard receiving the Navy version. And whereas since its creation, there have been three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight Medal of Honor awards to those who fight to keep our country safe. And today is a day to honor their exemplary service. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one as the National Medal of Honor Day. In the city of Maynor, Texas, and do urge all citizens to recognize and honor all men and women who have been recipients of the Medal of Honor. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Maynor on the seventeenth day of March twenty twenty one. Sign, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. And you know, this again goes with, uh, last year when the city became a Purple Heart City, and it's so it's just fitting to be able to do these things, these proclamations. So with that being said, moving on to our next agenda item. And do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, moving right along to public hearing.
Uh, Mayor.
Yeah.
So, sorry, um, the public hearing is going to get pulled, number one. So there's no action taking on that.
All right.
Sorry, Tom, I jumped on that.
Well, yeah, no, I was, I wasn't sure whether we needed to read it in just to say that there'd be no action, but it's there, it's done.
Okay. All right then, so moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, all following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory uh, by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, we have for consideration discussion and possible action to approve the City Council minutes of the March third, twenty twenty-one City Council Regular Meeting and consideration discussion and possible action on the acceptance of the February twenty twenty-one departmental reports. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, approved consent agenda items two and three.
All right, it's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
No second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, uh, I, I, I do have a question. Uh, one is, uh, where is it at? Development Service? No, it's, uh, I think Community Development, the Spring Fling. Uh, Debbie, can you give some, uh, info on the, on the Spring Fling?
Well, the Spring Fling is running from March twentieth to, um, April seventeenth. It's based off of the Shop Small Shop Local Program. And after speaking to some of the small businesses, you know, they really still need our help and support. So I decided we'd do this for the month. Um, and then so, but I, I lowered it so like for every fifteen dollars someone spends at a participating small business, they get to enter the ticket again. And so what we're going to do for our prizes, there'll be a first and second place because for the shop small, we did the, the one first place winner um, or the first drawing. So they're going to get a chance to win one of two gift baskets. And the unique thing about this is all the items for the gift baskets will be purchased from all small businesses in Maynor. So there'll be two different gift baskets from Maynor. And from, like I say, from the, uh, small businesses that are participating in the program. Did you see on the report the businesses that are participating? If, I mean, I can read them out to let people know that we have eight businesses participating. We have libation station, I Wayne's Caribbean Kitchen, Maxine's Gumbo House, Do It's Tarring Service, Texas Traditional Barbecue, Cafe Two Ninety, Golden Beijing, and Maynor Party Rental.
Appreciate it, Debbie.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, also had a question regarding Public Works, just some information, uh, on the says, it just said twenty twenty cap metro planning improvements in bidding phase. Uh, can, Tom or, or, uh, Mike, if you can just give me, what, what does that mean bidding phase?
Actually. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, actually, we went out to bids and we opened the bid, uh, Tuesday or Monday, and we, we're getting ready to award that, and it should be awarded on next council meeting.
Okay, got it, appreciate it. Uh, any additional questions, uh, from council? If none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda item number four.
And Mayor, before you get started, this one was, uh, uh, linked to the one that we polled earlier. So this one is being polled from the agenda as well.
No problem. Like I said, uh, it's in the item number five. Um, consideration, discussion, impossible action on a resolution approving and authorizing the Manor Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement. Improvement area number one and improvement area number two, Tom.
And so, um, you can see in the background summary that, uh, over the past couple of years, we've approved, uh, different steps of this Pid uh, development, and what this is, is the agreement that actually allows us to reimburse. Uh, my understanding is that no fees have been collected, there's nothing to, uh, disperse yet, but we're getting closer, and so this puts in place the agreement that allows us to do that.
Okay.
And Tom, refresh my memory, how, how's that, is it, how much reimbursement are we talking possibly?
Well, um, it, it's for specific things, and, and I don't have the agreement right in front of me, but um, the Pid allowed thirty cents above, and there was, um, there was landscaping and, uh, trails and
Okay.
park areas, things like that, that, uh, we will be reimbursing portions of, if not all.
Okay, and it was thirty cents. Okay.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we, uh, approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero-two, approving and authorizing the Main Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement. Uh, improvement area one and improvement area two.
It's been so motioned, do I have a second?
I second.
I second.
I will give the second to Councilwoman Deja Hill. Any questions to the motion?
Mayor.
Yep.
This is Veronica, the legal counsel for the city, just wanted to let y'all know that we also have bond counsel here, Gregory Miller, and we do have, um, Tally Williams, who's representing the developer. And, um, just wanted to let you know that in addition to what Tom has provided, we will actually be back to you April seventh uh, with quite a few more documents than what you see here today. This is the start of, uh, the process for bond issuance that council has already gone through uh, with the Lagos Pid. So I wanted just to use this opportunity to provide you that information.
Okay, appreciate it, appreciate it.
We're, we're going to be busy next meeting.
Got it. Uh, all right, so, uh,
The amount is, um, can you, uh, what's that estimated amount in the contract? How to exceed, was it like two million or something like that?
So for the the Pid, the reimbursement and, uh, the improvement district reimbursement agreement that you have in front of you is exactly, there is an amount provided, and if I, um, can look or if Gregory, if you know the section, it's provided in there.
Veronica's tally, I've got it right here, it's, um, not to exceed two point five nine five. So, two million five hundred ninety-five thousand for improvement area one.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a statement of work for George Butler Associates, Inc. for the Manor Pavement Management Project, Frank, program, Frank.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so what, uh, you have before you tonight is a proposal to assemble a pavement management program that would span four years for the city. What this would include is an initial, uh, assessment, um, data collection phase where all of the city streets would be, uh, driven and video recorded and data collected to assess street conditions, um, all the way down to the level of individual potholes. And all of that information then would be uploaded into a database that would be available online if the city wanted to allow it to be published. People can look at it and see what the current status of any given street is. Um, in addition, that data would be brought into uh, uh, another database for engineering analysis and optimization to develop a roadway maintenance program. Um, and that program would prescribe, uh, specific values to each roadway segment in the whole city uh, to rank them and to prioritize them and to identify what sort of repairs or maintenance are necessary. Uh, the goal of this is to provide a comprehensive plan that the city can use from year to year to, um, best allocate maintenance dollars, budget for them, um, and track progress over time. The condition of the roads, uh, I've got a, a quick demo if you would like to see uh, some of the, the, the user interface that's available, you know, to anybody that would be interested. If you'd like to, I can post it real quick here on the share screen.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, give you a couple of minutes.
Okay, it's, it's pretty cool. Okay, so everybody can see the screen.
I mean.
Yep, okay, so this, this would be an example of what the output would be from the initial data collection. It would show the whole network of roads. Um, they're all color coded on a scale of one to five, with one being the, the best condition, five being in, in the worst shape. Um, there's an average score at the top left, you can see for this particular area, it's two point one eight. Um, and so that scoring is important in that it will provide, um, uh, an assessment of what the roadway conditions are, and you can track it over time and see how the overall roadway uh, system improves through the maintenance activity. Also tells you how many miles you have, uh, and like I said, down to the number of potholes. You can go in and click and see every single pothole that's identified in the network. And then if you want to zoom in on it and get more data, you can pull up on the screen and see, here's the street section, here's the pothole. You've got coordinates and address, it summarizes the types of, uh, conditions there, whether you've got cracking or potholes or, you know, complete failure. Um, and you can search for any of these and sort, so it's, it's really a, a fully functional database uh, that's available to anybody that the city wants to, to grant access, um, to. Um, and it's a powerful tool, and it will enable, um, uh, not only tracking, but, but also prioritization when you're looking at, okay, well, what streets do we do next? Um, the ones that will be put forward through the, this system and the analysis will be the ones that will gain the highest return for the dollar investment. Because up until now, uh, the budgets for maintenance haven't been that large for the city. And so some of the money that's been spent has been, okay, we'll fix the very worst roads. Um, as the budget has expanded now, there's enough money to do a little bit more work. Some of that maybe instead of going and fixing the worst roads and spending a lot of dollars per square yard, the city could spend more money on things like maybe pavement cracking, which will preserve that pavement for maybe another five or six or seven years. And so your, your dollars per square yard of pavement to keep it in a good shape will be optimized because you pay a lot more per square yard for structural. And so if you can intercept that failure process early on, you can, you can eliminate um, the high dollar structural repairs that come after a, a, a failing, uh, a pavement system is completely failed. And so that's, that's the general nature of the program. Um, what it includes is the first year of the project setup. Um, all of the, the data and analysis report will work with staff on prioritization um, designs for what the different types of remediations will be for the different types of distresses. Um, and then every year for the next three years, the whole system will be reassessed and, and then a new plan put forward. And, and so there'll be a logical progression, and you'll be able to track and see, um, the improvement of the city's roadway system. So that's the, the general nature of it.
And Frank, that is awesome. That was so cool. That is neat.
I was impressed, too.
That's a game changer right there. I love it.
It's next level.
Yeah.
So, uh, Frank, before, before I go, throw this to, uh, a, a, a motion for, for council. Um, well, this, so this ties into the, uh, the, the recent creation of the Capital Improvements Management Committee?
Well, this can definitely be a tool that, that, the, the Capital Improvements Committee would use in, in, in allocating all of the budgets and the planning for overall capital improvement. So your pavement management program is one of a number of different things, you know, including the, the water and wastewater master plans. We have a drainage master plan, your hike and bike trail master plans, your thoroughfare plans. So all of these things are, um, you know, good, solid, uh, resources for decision-making in allocating budgets and, and plans for, uh, maintenance and improvements of the city's infrastructure. And, and really, the only area that they, that, that the city has no kind of plan at all right now is a pavement management plan. So it's really the one area. And, and the good news is, is the way this video work is done is through cell phones. You have one cellphone that's got a route and the other one that's doing the video recording. And so it, it, it doesn't take much time, and it, and it's inexpensive. Uh, it shaves about thirty percent off the cost of going out and doing it with more conventional methods, either walking it the old-fashioned way like I used to do years ago, or flying it with a drone, or driving it with very expensive roadway sensing equipment. Um, this doesn't provide all of the detail as, uh, of the very sensitive roadway equipment that would be like band mounted. Um, but that's, that's really usually relegated to, you know, very large municipalities, Houston, Dallas, New York. You know, they have those kinds of, of, of budgets for that kind of maintenance program. This one's very economical, it's fast, and the nice thing is, is that it is impartial. It's using a, a quantitative analysis rather than qualitative individual, you know, because you don't know if the guy who goes out and looks at the street next year is the same guy that went last year, and he may have a different impression of what the condition of that street is. This is totally done with computer algorithms, so it's unbiased, and it's consistent over time.
All right, appreciate it. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Uh, Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that the council and mayor approve the proposed statement of works number three to the existing master service agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc. for the pavement management program in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, so motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
I just have one, uh, from Ms. Lydia. See how we doing financially or, uh, Frank, maybe you can answer, is this going to come out of a certain fund or is this coming out of our general?
So we're, we're prepared to do this when the city's ready to do this. And, and so if the city has funds to allocate now, that's fine. If you want to put this in your budget and, and, you know, have it carry over into next fiscal year, um, that's fine. I think, you know, there were discussions about finding funding sources for it this year, but we'll work with the city however you all want. I mean, we could even get started in September and not invoice for the beginning of the work until October. If we want to, you know, it's however you all want to, uh, assemble that. And is Lydia still on? Yeah, she's.
Yeah, she's there. I think that's, I think it's a good idea to bring it to, to budget so we can kind of have a look and see where we have with some of those things. And then also, I guess, get, um, since April's going to be a big bond meeting, um, and that, and those other kind of things and, you know.
Dr. Harvey, I had the same question, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah, so, but I, I mean, we've already talked about this, Frank, and, and the cap improvements, I mean, so it's, it's definitely a, uh, uh, Councilman Weir, this is a, a response to the long, uh, long-term question about the roadways and the machine and all that kind of stuff. And so, um, so I'm glad we're, uh, uh, have a solution. And so now, you know, we just need to look at everything that's going on and figure out, see if we can come up with a, a outside source or something, you know, to cover the costs of that. Then we just have to prioritize whatever's going on.
Understood.
Any, any additional questions?
I just wanted to make sure that it was a, this one cost is for the two-parter that you explained, Frank, that it goes, they first do the, the layout and then when it goes to the engineers, that's all covered in that? Okay.
Yes, that's all covered. This is comprehensive and we'll hold that price for the subsequent year updates for the three years. And, you know, you can authorize it as you wish. So, you know, if, if you don't like it after the first year, you can say, hey, we don't want to do year two or whatever. There's no, you know, commitment to that. Um, I think you're gonna like it.
Okay, that was my next question. If it was a reoccurring cost, thank.
And that's spelled out specifically in here. There's no hidden fees.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions? There being a roll call?
Uh, uh, one more question.
Okay.
Um, does this, was this for, uh, only, uh, City of Maynor, does it cover ETJs? Or were we looking just at, was the cost just for City of Maynor?
So this is specifically for the roughly 80 lane miles that the city has in the city limits that are city responsibility for maintenance. So it's only city streets. It doesn't include the tech stop roadways or Travis County roadways, um, that are outside of the city limits in the ETJ.
Would there be, um, is there a way, like, is there like a, a flat rate or a fee of the ETG, ETJs could, um, contribute to the cause if they want to be a part of the process for themselves? Or is there any, any outsourcing that could happen from this? Or is it a, uh, just the one City of Maynor thing?
But this, this is really for the, 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 the City of Maynor now, you know, we could look at partnering, um, you know, with Travis County to expand that. Um, but that's, that's a, that's a sort of a whole nother scope and concept.
We, we can't guarantee when or if they'll start a project, whether they've got funding in place. And so that's what makes it difficult.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to put it out there because I know someone's going to ask, um, you know, if, uh, if, because it's going to be on a here, it's going to see it and it's going to sound great. They want to want to find out those questions. So that's why.
Yeah, the city has partnered with Travis County before, but that was really for a project that was identified by Travis County and, and Maynor joined in with them, um, because their project development length is so long. Uh, this would probably delay the city getting, you know, the city streets done in any sort of timely manner.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Mayor Paul Tim, because a, as you said, again, just for on the record, it's, it's a piece of, we have our quarterly transportation meetings, we have our dialogues with the different transportation entities for the areas they own, whether it's the county roads like Boyce D'Arc and, and whatnot. And if it happens to be a state road like FM 973 and, and, and going over there down Lexington. But, you know, again, uh, focusing and getting those worked out and getting those fixed. And we're not having a team or, or putting the money aside to be able to do what we need to do for the roads we own. Uh, i- is also bad business. So, uh, as you said, it's good that the questions, as you brought up, uh, a few, a few months ago, we're now starting to, to move forward towards, uh, doing our own internal, uh, greater planning and coordination for, for managing the, the roads we solely own, uh, in, in, where the county and the state would say, no, you, you got to come up with your own strategy to take care of your own roads. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Wallace? Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance amending the code of ordinances to formally create the budget committee. Uh, Lydia?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, this is just to formalize, uh, and put on record the official formation of the budget committee. It was established well before my, uh, employment with the city. Uh, this is just to bring it in line with the other committees that we already currently have on ordinance.
Got it. Appreciate it. Uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion. That, um, Council approved ordinance number 607 to formally create the budget committee.
And we don't need no budget committee. No, okay, um, it's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
My second.
I give that to Mayor Paul Tim Harvey. That's twice he got cut. He got cut through, Sonia. Oh, all right. Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being a roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
God damn it, yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill? Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to executive session, city council will now convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551 point 071 Texas government code in section 1.05 Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel to discuss the Shadow Glen Development Agreement in section 551 point 074 Personal Matters Discussion of City Managers Employment.
Okay, so as normal, we're going to be having everybody moved over into a breakout room. I know that we do have two separate executive sessions. So for anybody that will not be attending the second one, just please leave and then I'll move over the people that are necessary for the secondary one. And you, can you help me identify just everybody who's going over to the first one?
I'm in both.
Yes, so it's Tom, our council, um, Chris Lane and Veronica.
Uh, Frank too.
Frank as well.
Oh, and Frank too, I'm sorry. And I think that's it. For this one. On the next one, Tracy will be joining.
Um, Scott wanted to join too, so if there's no issue with that.
None at all.
No issue?
And Lydia also, sorry.
Yes.
Pete, Veronica needs to go in there too. Keith should be moving you in.
Okay, thank you. I was told not to, that's why.
Oh, no, you're supposed to be moved in.
I'm, okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Do I need to text Keith and let him know to let me in? Oh, nevermind.
He's aware. Hi Frank, they'll let you in shortly.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I didn't realize it needed me.
Everyone's just running away.
Hi Frank, they'll let you in shortly.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I didn't realize that needed me.
Everyone's just running away.
Hi, UBS. They're going into the second session, second item in the executive session. So if you can, I think C needs to be in there.
No, Tracy. Okay.
And and if Paige is needed as well.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if someone was gonna text Paige or not, but I am done unless y'all need me. I can be reached on.
Oh, yeah. So okay, I'll text you if we need you. Thank you. All right. Have a good night. Bye.
You too. Bye. I don't know if someone was gonna text Paige or not, but I am done unless y'all need me. I can be reached on.
Well, you're so, okay, I'll text you if we need you. Thank you. All right. Have a good night. Bye.
You too. Bye.
All right. Who we missing? I think we got everybody, right? Okay, uh, city council will now reconvene into open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five, five, one. Texas government code and take action if any on items discussed during closed executive session. Agenda item number eight postponed item consideration discussion of possible action on amendment to the city manager's contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I second.
What's that?
I didn't mo- I didn't motion yet.
I was about to ask where's the man, what's the motion? I was trying to beat somebody.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, amend, uh, approved the amendment to the city manager's contract.
All right. It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sonia, do, do you wanna do a second? I know you've been trying to get in all, all evening.
No, that's her. She can have it.
All right. They're probably seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none. Roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Oh, that's a hard decision. Um, yes.
Mayor Protim Harvey. Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember where?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I, I do appreciate it. I, I was not ready to go yet.
Not ready for you to go.
Exactly. We're glad to have you here in, in, I think, you know, with the, with the revisions and the changes of, of definitely the way we're trying to have more key performance indicators year over year that we're continuing to progress and meeting the needs of the growth from, from a yearly focus. I appreciate you jumping in and being a part of this, this administration's focus in that. And, uh, what I believe is gonna be the next administration's focus as well. So I appreciate you, uh, jumping on board with us.
Well, thank you again.
All right. With that being it, I now, uh, call this meeting adjourned at eight fifty-five P M. You all have a good evening.
Hi.
Good night. Bye-bye.